Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September Business Meeting of the Board of Education. Dr. Baskin, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, okay. May I have approval of the agenda, please?
Second.
Announcements? Who has announcements? Okay, I guess we'll skip announcements this evening. We have a new representative, student representative. Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Yolanda Johnson. I'm a senior at Beloit Memorial High School.
Thank you, welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
So now is the part of the meeting where we do recognitions. But the person who does that isn't in here right now. So I guess we'll wait a minute for Michelle to get back. Okay, I apologize for the delay. Michelle is making a couple of copies that we need, and I didn't realize that she hadn't come back yet. So while we are waiting for her to do that, I will announce future board meetings. So committee meetings, the next committee meetings will be on October 10th, Monday, October 10th. Please note that this is a change. Board meetings are normally on Tuesday. However, the next set of committee meetings will be on Monday, October 10th, except for the Finance, Transportation, and Property Committee, which will meet at 3 o'clock on October 11th. The next business meeting is on Tuesday, October 25th. Okay, now we can go to announcements. Thanks, Michelle.
So tonight, we have recognitions, and we have three companies with us tonight. We're recognizing them because they have generously donated time and energy into organizing the school supply drives for our students and families. I'd like to ask Joe Larkin, the Regional Director from Advia Credit Union, Barbara Ubelacher, from Communications Specialist from Rock Energy Cooperative, and Stephanie McCord from Midstates Concrete Industries to join me at the podium. Thank you. So each of these companies generously donated large quantities of school supplies, which were sorted and distributed to each of our schools, K through 12. Due to their efforts, there were enough supplies to provide a very large box to every school. Thank you so much for your generosity and dedication to the School District of Beloit. It is truly appreciated, and it helps our students and their families tremendously. Would any of you like to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you to the recognition. It certainly wasn't done for the recognition. It was done for the students, and also on behalf of Advia, and I'm sure the other companies as well. Thank you, and glad to be a part of a successful year for the students. Thank you.
We did also have some school supplies that were donated from the city through the Beloit public pool. But unfortunately, I have not been able to track down the person that dropped them off to be able to have them join us tonight. So if you're out there watching, feel free to give me a call, 361-4000. I'd be more than happy to say thank you in person. But before you go, we have a certificate that's been personalized for each of you and your companies. And the certificate that you're being awarded is for the generous support of the district's students and families through a school supply drive. Employees organized a drive acquiring a vast amount of school supplies for students in all grades. The School District of Beloit is proud to have community partners like you. Thank you so much. And that concludes our recognitions.
Thank you all for your contribution to the district, and as Michelle said, to the benefit of the students.
Announcements for September 2016. The Sixth Annual Good to Great Activity Festival was held Sunday, September 18th, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Beloit Memorial High School and around the city bridges. Record number of participants, over 400, were in attendance, enjoying the pool, pontoon rides, a biking smoothie machine, obstacle course, tennis, paddle boats, other activities, and a healthy lunch. This was a collaborative community effort, including safe schools, healthy schools, Kerry Airmark, Beloit Parks and Rec Services, State Line YMCA, Latino Services Provider, State Line Boys and Girls Club, Youth 2, Youth 4, Change, Beloit Health Systems, Gilbank Construction, Even Start Dancers, Berg Party Supplies, Ace Hardware, and the School District of Beloit. A special thanks to all that participated and supported. Parent-teacher conferences for Beloit Memorial High School will be held this Thursday, September 29th, in the Field House at Beloit Memorial High School. McNeil's PTO will be hosting a Pancake Breakfast fundraiser this Friday, October 1st, at McNeil Intermediate School, 1524 Frederick Street, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. The cost will be $5 per person, all ages, and you can purchase them at the door. Your yummy breakfast will consist of unlimited pancakes, two sausage links, and milk or coffee. Additional sausage or milk will be available for purchase at 25 cents. There will also be a silent auction that you can participate in. All profits from this event will go towards McNeil's Playground Fund. As a result, please support us. If you aren't able to attend, we will gladly accept donations. Grades 4 through 8 parent-teacher conferences will be held at the intermediate schools on October 4th and 6th. BLA conferences will be held all day, October 6th. Homecoming Week is October 3rd through the 8th at Beloit Memorial High School. The Homecoming Parade will take place at 1:00 p.m. on Friday, October 7th, starting in the front of Beloit Memorial High School. The Homecoming Football Game will be the same night, starting at 7:00 p.m. at Jacobson Field. The Homecoming Dance will be Saturday, October 8th. October 14th, there will be no school due to Staff Professional Development Day. October 18th and 20th, elementary parent-teacher conferences will be held that evening. That concludes this evening's announcements. Thank you.
Just one correction on the announcements. The Pancake Breakfast for McNeil is actually Saturday, October 1st. Thank you.
Now, this is the time of the meeting where citizens may speak on business or action items as these items are called. May I remind community members to be respectful in their comments and to recognize or realize that the board will not act upon their comments this evening, and that each community member is limited to two minutes in their comments. Is there anyone at this time?
Ms. President, I represent a small but growing coalition of community members, and we were each going to switch off at the three-minute, but I guess now two-minute mark in reading to save time. Do you want me to just introduce each one of us and read it myself quickly? Or do you want us to switch off?
Why don't you go ahead and read it?
Okay. I am Tia Johnson. I live at 1621 Indian Road. With me is, excuse me, Michelle at 911 East Grand Street, Elliot at 1621 Indian Road, and Isaac, who I believe wants to say his own words. I am Tia Johnson. I live at 1621 Indian Road. My son is a seventh grader at the Fruzen School. I have questions and concerns regarding the administration of the iPad program and the iPad insurance. I have spoken to Mr. Bonds on the phone and emailed him with some follow-up questions. He has committed to answering my questions to the best of his ability by the end of this month. I understand he is very busy and greatly appreciate his efforts, as I doubt this data is readily available. I believe decisions made by any government at any level should be informed, well-planned, and balanced. It is well-known that complaining about a problem without proposing a solution is called whining. We are not here tonight to whine, rather to inform and then offer a possible solution for your consideration. Regardless if you decide to consider my suggestion, this issue is deserving of your attention. The uses of technology are endless. It can be a wonderful tool used to create, communicate, and educate. As a former curricular developer in the area of bioinformatics, I have long been a strong advocate for the integration of technology in education. However, as with any change, it ought to be suitable and appropriately implemented. The district provides an iPad Air 2 for every student. The Worth Ave Group, based in Oklahoma, will provide insurance coverage for up to $399 per unit. This does not cover the iPad case, excuse me, which, if damaged or missing, may cost the student $40. The cost for students under the ninth grade is $22 per year. For students in ninth grade and above, it is $50.60 per year. Mr. Bonds explained to me that this is because the high school students with the insurance are allowed to take the iPads home. Okay, so what exactly does $22 a year policy cover? According to the sheet from the Worth Ave Group, the Worth Ave Group will protect the device against accidental damage, fire, flood, natural disasters, power surge, and vandalism. Please note that Worth does not cover intentional loss or damage. This leads to confusion because the school district website states, quote, "This policy will ensure the student, not a specific device. This option will cover the student on school grounds." Yet, each student is assigned a specific device and is supposed to return it at the end of the day. I was surprised to learn that the devices are not turned in at the last class period teacher, but rather to a designated iPad room. Since receiving the iPads, an employee has been in this room during either pickup or drop-off only twice. What is there to prevent a student to drop off his or own iPad and pick up some other one? There may be cameras in the room. However, even with all the cameras located in all the retail stores, in 2014, there was still a loss of $32 billion due to shoplifting and worker theft. I like to believe and trust in humans, but I am also a realist. The good news is that even with the lax procedures, according to Mr. Bonds, the district only had about 1% of all district's iPads damaged last year. For the 7,012 students last year, this means roughly 70 units. A cracked iPad screen currently costs $290. Total replacement, 400. Based on these numbers, last year's total damages cost came somewhere between $20,000 to $30,000. If we assume the high end of that value and spread it out over the total student count, that comes to $4.29 per student. According to the Beloit Daily News article from September 17th, the poverty rate in the School District of Beloit is 74%, up from 71% in 2012. Further, the district's homeless liaison coordinator is quoted, "Child poverty is a major issue in Rock County. We have students living in cars with their families, with parents often having to choose to buy food for their children or pay rent. Our kids in poverty do not have clothing or ways to launder the clothing they do have." In 2013, in the city of Beloit, 32% of families with children under the age of 18 earned less than $30,000. It is doubtful that $20 to cover the cost for iPad insurance for a device that does not even come home is very high on these families' lists of priorities. And it certainly begs the question as to how those families are to afford the cost if their student accidentally or intentionally damages or loses the iPad. Now for a moment, let us imagine, had every student last year opted for the insurance coverage, this would have meant that $205, $458 would have left our community and happily been received by the insurance company in Stillwater, Oklahoma. According to Mr. Bonds, roughly 110 parents took advantage of the iPad insurance plan last year. With merely 1.6% of students purchasing the coverage and around 70 units damaged or lost, it appears the district should reconsider how it is handling guaranteeing coverage for the units. As for the damages the Worth Avenue Group covers, for units that must stay on school grounds, all of them should be covered under the district's building insurance anyway. How does the district cover any of these incidents for textbooks or lab equipment that must remain on-site? Or for non-removable technology devices such as computers, projectors, monitors, cameras, printers, and so on? If a student intentionally damages or steals anything, we fully agree that student and parents should be held financially responsible. Where this becomes an issue is the weak comparison of books to iPads, as has actually been argued to me by a school district employee. Textbooks have little value outside the intended purposes of education, whereas iPads can provide a person with educational material as well as a movie or music player, Skype, instant messaging, Facebook selfies, YouTube gaming, and seemingly endless other entertainment issues. I have no problem covering any costs caused by my son should he cause damage to his assigned iPad or intentionally damage another student's iPad. Yet, it is wrong for the district to hold either him or me accountable for damages caused to the iPad issued to him if it becomes damaged by another student or should it be stolen while on school property. The district is required by law to provide an education to all the students. If the district does not accept that we will not be held accountable for any damages not caused by my child, then do not issue an iPad to him. Find another means of educating him. Now, I promised a proposal for a solution. Rather than leaving the district in a position to have to be a collections agency to recoup the cost of iPad damages not covered due to lack of insurance, the district should take responsibility of covering the costs. As mentioned before, according to the information provided me, last year's damages loss rate was less than $4.30 a student. My proposal is that the district should increase its fees by $5 per student and use that increase only for the repair and replacement of iPads. For a family living at or below the poverty level, $5 is far more manageable than $400, $290, or even $20. Three minutes does not provide much time to go into details, so I do encourage Mr. Bonds to share his findings with the board to help spur on a serious discussion regarding iPads, youth procedures, and insurance coverage.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Isaac Johnson, and I live at 1621 Indian Road. I go to Fran Fruzen Intermediate. I think there should be a boys softball or baseball team. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Superintendents, reports, please.
Good evening. Tonight, we have two reports. The first is Jennifer Pepke and Anthony Bonds on virtual school, providing an update on our virtual school programming here in the district, followed by Tasha Bell, who will be standing in for Dr. Williams tonight for an equity update. And we'll begin with Mr. Bonds and Ms. Pepke.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce, as all you know, Jen Pepke. She is our Director of Student Engagement, and she also oversees our virtual school programming. And so this night, we just wanted to share a little bit about the direction for our virtual school programming. And I'm going to turn it over to her, and we'll take questions at the end.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to speak with the Curriculum Committee for the Board, so I will briefly go through the slides that I presented to you all to just give you an update on this year with the virtual school. So we provide our online programming through Fuel Education. We have two different programs that families can choose from called K-12 or PEAK. We've made some changes in the program from Odyssey as the curriculum to the K-12 and PEAK, having certified teachers through the K-12 program, so they're kind of spread all over the state. But all of our classes are taught and facilitated by Wisconsin State Certified Teachers. We now have dedicated staff to our virtual school, and we have been focusing heavily on outreach to open-enrolled out students to bring them back to the district if they have chosen to go elsewhere for virtual programming. Last year, we began the year with about 30 students, and throughout the year, as students sort of came and went, we served about 80 students in the program. And you can see the breakdown in students' grades 2 through second-year seniors, who we also had several successful graduates. We had eight Beloit Virtual students receive a diploma with the School District of Beloit in the class of 2016. When I presented to you two weeks ago, we had 47 students. Today, we are at 61, and we have three or four more that are just at that point of being ready to enroll, so the numbers are constantly growing. Again, we're serving grades 3 up through some returning seniors who would like to finish their diploma, so we're all proud of them as well. Moving ahead, our goal now is taking the year of experience that we had and looking at resources from neighboring school districts who have successful virtual schools to create our handbook, increase our accountability for students' expectations to return for assessments, that they're taking full-time course loads, that they are passing classes in order to continue in the virtual school, and then getting some more promotion out for our program, and then looking big picture at the possibility of a charter school option for us. So we'll take any questions.
Left, right, sorry. In your presentation, you said there were approximately 80 students that came and went throughout the program. I'm just trying to understand, I mean, are they leaving, like, the high school and coming and then going back to school? Or can you just explain that a little bit to me?
Generally, they would be high school students who either come to us and then back to the high school, or in and out of BLA. They may come in for a time when they are administratively hearing placed. So depending on the length of maybe that consequence as well, so that we're still offering educational services to the students, so that factors into it as well. And then some who kind of go in gung-ho and then realize, this isn't quite the fit for me.
So do you have any percentage as to how many, like, are starting now and will continue till the end of the school year? Like, you'll have somebody for the whole year? Or is that not how it works? Is it normally just a short period of time?
I would anticipate that we have a good amount of our students who, if they started last year and they're continuing with us this year, they'll stay through, but we're still at that point where they're coming in and it might not be quite what they thought it was going to be. So one of the things that we really encourage all of our students and families to do is consider a blended program, taking a few classes at their homeschool and then still do the virtual school for their other classes. So we have students who are taking classes at intermediate schools, at an elementary, and at the high school, as well as the virtual school.
Okay, Pam in the north.
I just wondered, in the Curriculum Committee, we discussed some of the benefits for someone choosing virtual school for all or part of their homeschool experience. Could you explain some of those things that we went over, the extracurriculars and so forth?
Sure, yep. So one of the things when we invite students and really encourage them to come back if they've open-enrolled out, if you're a student in Beloit Virtual School, you retain all of the benefits of being an SDB student. So if you're a high school student, get your ID, go to games, go to dances, participate in all those activities, extracurriculars. We have a student who is looking forward to being in both the play and the musical this year, but taking all of her classes online. So definitely being able to take advantage. We have a student at McNeil who's playing on the football team but taking all of his classes online. And then we hold the same expectation that they're keeping up with their classes, they're keeping their grades up. So we have that communication back and forth with administration.
I remember when I was on the Curriculum Committee, we talked a lot about this. But I'm curious about the handbook. When do you foresee that coming about? Because it seems to me that we were talking at one time about some criteria, and I'm wondering if there is, like, at least one sheet of criteria. But I like what you have when you say, "based on learned experience." When it was new, we really didn't know.
Yep, so one of the things that we do is almost hold a variation of like a mini IEP for a student, regular education or special education, to say, get some feedback from the student's current teachers, from their parents, from their administrator, to say, you know, this is kind of what online school is about. The curriculum is presented, you know, close to a grade level, reading level, and is very text-heavy. So looking at really what they would be able to achieve and making sure that it would be a good fit. So we have those criteria in place, but not fully in that handbook yet. So, yep, we're definitely including that.
So, Mr. Bonds and Jen, we had a discussion in Curriculum about the financial implication of this, and I noticed we didn't have those numbers. Are you just discussing what we discussed in the last meeting, and then we'll have those numbers at the next Curriculum meeting?
That is correct, but I do have them preliminarily right now with you, with me, but I think Troy best to have a deeper discussion at the committee meeting.
Okay, so I'll just wait until the next Curriculum meeting to hear that. Thank you.
One more question for you two. How, how old can a student be and participate in this online school?
So a student, a student with an IEP is eligible to receive educational services through the age of 21, and then regular education students, we could still take them in their fifth year.
Thank you very much. At this time, Ms. Tasha Bell will be coming to the podium to give us an equity update, and shortly thereafter, an Equality Committee update.
Correct. Good evening. I am filling in for Dr. Williams tonight. I just want to update you all on the Equity Plan, and I'll just touch on a few of the things that were highlighted in the Board Packet of things that have happened recently. So, our office was able to support Hispanic Heritage Month at BMHS, which was the Latino Community Fair. So our students that are in LULAC and our parent councils collaborated with the League of Women Voters and helped with voter registration. We're also planning an assembly at the high school on October 11th with a traditional Mexican dance company that will be performing for our students. We will also begin our Parent Academy in October. That will be the second Monday of every month following our Equality Committee meeting. Our office also hosted a day during Administrator Academy, in which we met with all administrators at the Rotary Center and went over our equity goals and talked about parental involvement and community involvement. And a brief update on the Merrill Center Program, which is the Beloit Alternative to Student Suspension. As of September 23rd, so this is looking back to last school year, there were 15 students that were served. The inter-juridical team met on September 16th. Looking ahead, we will have our Second Annual Veterans Day Celebration, and it will be moved to November 10th instead of November 11th. We are also looking to host a school district of Beloit Dr. Martin Luther King Program on January 17th. And for the first time ever, we will be hosting a Beloit Teacher-Student-Parent Recognition Night on May 17th. A brief update on Grow Your Own, our multicultural teacher scholarship program, and there's an asterisk next to that for a reason. As of the printing of this, it was $44,202. Our goal for this school year was to reach $50,000, and we're very close to our goal. And this is just reaching out to SDB folk. We have not extended this out to the community, so this is all in-house. We were able to do it through a variety of ways, and people are very excited about the program, so we're looking forward to continuing that this year. I know that in the Equity Plan, there's a note that mentions the Affirmative Action Report. However, we're going to hold off on that report and not mention it tonight because they are still working on the official numbers that will be presented to you all at a later date, so that's the reason why I am skipping that part. That's it.
Couple of questions, Dennis, and then Chris.
First of all, the Board, I'm looking forward to receiving some information about how to donate to our Grow Your Own. I know that you asked all the other stakeholders of the Boy School District family. I'm sure that many of us on the Board would like to contribute as well.
I am sure that Dr. Williams will watch this meeting, and you will hear from him this week.
And, and I know that we're going to have a more robust discussion about the diversity in hiring promotional numbers, but Dr. Johnson, I generally, if something's wrong, I generally speak up about it, but I also want to speak up for things that are going well. Looking at the preliminary numbers, this is wonderful. We're moving in the right direction. We look at 2013, 14 was 14.55%, and 2015 to 2016, a 28.27%. It's almost a, is 100% increase, so impressive work, and I'm sure we'll have further discussions later, but I just want to go on the record and say, good job.
And just so the Board's aware, yearly, the Affirmative Action Report is presented in October, and so we will be coming back next month with the final numbers, kind of to encapsulate our long hiring season, so we'll be bringing that back in a month.
Chris, and then Nora.
Thank you very much. I'm sure it was a last-minute villain. I had two questions. One, I tried to write down but didn't get it. You said the Parent Academy is going to meet monthly. What day?
The second Monday.
Thank you.
Of each month, following our Equality Committee, and Equality starts at 4:00. So we're looking to start our Parent Academy at 5:30.
Okay, great. Thank you. And my next question, it's kind of goes off what Dennis says, besides, you know, us being able to donate to that, are there any plans to reach out to the greater community in the city to donate to the Scholarship Fund?
Yes, so as I mentioned, our initial goal was to raise $50,000. That was including community members, but we've been able to do that by reaching out to our own right now with the school district of Beloit. However, I don't think any dollar amount is too much, so we will, once again, follow up with the Board members and then look ahead to reaching out to give those people within our community the opportunity to donate as well.
$44,000 is pretty impressive. I wasn't sure how it was going to happen, and when you said it, it just really took me off guard. And so, great job to all of our community members here in the district for donating, and keep it going, and yes, solicit us. But I had another question, kind of off of what Chris mentioned, this, this Parent Academy. Could you tell me a little bit more what, what parents can expect in that?
So Parent Academy is the opportunity for parents to have conversations with school district staff, particularly administration to ask questions of them, but also to be able, a lot of times, we speak school district language, and parents don't really get that. So we can say IEP and PBIS and all this stuff. So Parent Academy is looking to have a two-way conversation with parents, providing them with real-time district information, but making sure that it is an actual conversation. So parents can expect a wide range of school district topics, but also the opportunity to have informal conversations as well.
Okay, thank you.
You don't need to have Dr. Williams send it to us. Jen is on the job. She already emailed it to us.
Other questions or comments, shall we?
The Parent Academy, how is that, maybe I missed that part. How is, like, who is, is everyone invited to that, or how is that, can you?
It is open to any parent, and principals will be doing targeted outreach in their schools. However, it is open to any parent or any person in the community that may be a grandparent, maybe their aunt that's involved with the student at their school.
But is principal-driven? I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is how it's getting out to the parents?
So there will be communication from your child's school, as well as district-wide as well.
Thank you.
Chris?
Just another quick follow-up. Are you going to have a specific topic covered each, in each academy? And will there be like an agenda, so I would know which ones to come to?
You should come to all of them, because they will be awesome. But, yes, there will be a specific agenda, so one topic per month.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tasha. And you know, while you're up there, would you like to just do the equity?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just recently, we were able to have our first Equality Committee meeting, which I would say rivaled any other Equality Committee. We had a nice packed room of many people, and it was great. I actually called in a great favor to bring back Mrs. Hickman. I knew she was in district, so I called in a favor and asked her if she would come over. Historically, the first meeting of Equality Committee, Mrs. Hickman or Dr. Prude would present the history of Equality Committee. So this year, with Mrs. Hickman being back in district, I asked if she would come and present it. So we went over the position paper that was written in 1981, which actually formed the Equality Committee. So she was able to provide that information for our current committee members, as well as people who were new to the committee. So that was pretty awesome. And then we went over our Equity Plan update. That's something that Dr. Williams has kind of added in bits and pieces throughout our committee, so people are looking forward to what did we accomplish over the summer, what did we miss last year. And we went over our equity goals for our district for this year as well, so we had another outstanding meeting, and I look forward to the rest of them for this school year as well.
Questions or comments? Dr.
Baskin? So, Tasha, you've been very involved in the equity and in your position, and I know that there's been a lot of changes. I just want to know personally, are you comfortable with the direction that the district is going?
My boss is not here, but anyone that works in COLAC will vouch for me. I love Dr. Williams, and I love working with him. I love the opportunity to work with all district staff, and I am greatly pleased.
Okay, good. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Bonds?
Other questions? Dr. Johnson?
Nope, that's it. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time in filling in tonight, Tasha. All right, at this time, it is time for our Student Board Member Report, and I would like to officially welcome from the administration Yolanda Johnson. I actually remember the moment I met her and with her mother. I remember where we were. I remember how impressed I was with her, and obviously, her peers at the high school were impressed to have Yolanda be the representative for all of, not just Beloit Memorial High School, but all of our schools and students, all the way up. So welcome, and take it away. We had kind of a briefing before, so.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to start with telling you what's going on in Beloit Memorial. So first, tomorrow, there will be a guest speaker at Beloit Memorial, which we'll have an assembly for. He's kind of a surprise, so they're not really telling us who it is. And then next week is Homecoming Week, and the themes are as follows. Monday is Red Carpet, Dress Your Best. Tuesday is Movie Night, kind of a pajama day, or like bringing like fake popcorn to school type. Wednesday is Class Color Day, as usual. Thursday is Movie Star Day, and then Friday is Purple Day, which is also the Homecoming Parade and the Homecoming Football Game at 7:00 PM, as Dennis mentioned. And then Saturday is the Homecoming Dance. The theme is A Night in Hollywood, so you don't actually have to come with the big flared pants and the froes, but dress your best and look good. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
No. Okay. Thank you.
Committee reports, please? Finance?
The Finance, Transportation, Property Committee met on September 13th. We, Jamie gave us the investment performance review of the retiree benefits. We had a great program on the food service, and some overview of that program as well. I think we did discuss the, the fact that since that is free to everyone now, you know, we've talked a lot about the waste and making sure that we don't have extra waste because of that program. We have now started the, what everybody loves, the preliminary budget discussions. And the other item to note is that we, we are sending out the RFQ for the performance contract, and so we got an update on that. And that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Curriculum or teaching? What is it now? Teaching and learning and innovation?
Yes, teaching, learning, and innovation. The first thing on our agenda was to have the virtual school update, so Jen Pepke essentially made the same presentation that she made to us tonight. We thank her for that. Next, Dr. Bonds, or Mr. Bonds proposed that Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Technology Department change their name to the Department of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. We held a short discussion, and that passed, and we moved that that name change be brought to the whole Board. We had a report on our Students on the Move Ad-Hoc Committee. We received the list of members that is consists of both principals, teachers, or community members, and that committee will be getting started shortly. That committee will elect a chairperson, and they'll start their meetings. Finally, future agenda items, we have some financial information coming to us from the virtual school, and we should be talking about some student scheduling at the high school. Thank you.
The Policy and Personnel Committee met on August 23rd prior to our business meeting, and we typically do that to approve personnel recommendations. At the start of the school year, we had a host of new staff that we approved that evening, and we had a quite lively discussion on our recruitment procedures, which was presented to us mostly by our new HR Director, Deidre Salas. So, thank you. She's a real asset to our district. She's helped us through a lot of things in our hiring practices. Then we met also on September 13th, and a couple of policies were on the agenda. We tabled two. The one that will be coming forward tonight is 529.1, Recognized Holidays. And all we really did with that policy is just add a couple of sentences to make it sound a little more friendly to new staff coming to the district that whatever their religious practices, that they could speak to their supervisor to ask for ways that they could honor their recognized holidays. So that's coming forward tonight. Then we, we had another lively discussion on our Policy 443.4 Rule 1. That's the Alcohol and Other Controlled Substance Enforcement. That policy has had some changes in it, and we just wanted to really make sure that it coincided with our current Code of Conduct. So that's where our discussion really revolved around, and it's being looked at again to make sure that the wording in that policy does coincide with our Code of Conduct. So that was tabled. And then we also had Policy 225 Rule 1, and Policy 225, which has to do with our superintendent evaluation and all of the steps month by month. So we wanted to update those policies, but we're sending it back to our HR department to kind of look at what other districts are doing, and we decided to table that one. Again, a nice, healthy discussion on which way to go. So, from there, we then approved our personnel recommendations, and we did make some adjustments, and we made those updates and sent it on to the full Board. We had a discussion on legislative update. Both Dr. Johnson and Pam Charles gave us an update. Dr. Johnson talked about how the Association for Equity and School Funding will be releasing a report on September 14th. I don't think I've seen that yet, and he will send, send it to the Board, and maybe I overlooked it. But also, Pam Charles talked about meeting with our Representative Mark Spritzer regarding the recess issue, and he was going to continue to work to see if there would be, if this topic could have, if we could have more local control in our district for that topic. So, those were our meetings on the 13th and on the 23rd. Are there any questions?
Now we'll do the consent list. Please notice that all items listed with an asterisk will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items unless a Board member or citizen so requests, in which event, the items will be removed from the general order of business and considered in their normal sequence on the agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent list.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Item 9B, Students on the Move Ad-Hoc Update, and Approval of the- So, Item 9B, Students on the Move Ad-Hoc Update, an approval of the committee. May I have a motion? May I have a motion for Item 9B?
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Item 9C, Policy 529.1, Recognized Holidays?
Approval?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Item 9D, Personnel Recommendations, Exhibit A?
Move approval?
Second. All in favor?
I have a, I have a comment. On our Personnel Recommendations for tonight, we have, I believe it's on this one, we will be hiring someone to replace Melissa Badger, and we're all very excited about that. Probably the staff that have been pitching in to do her jobs since she left is probably real excited, but we can't wait to have that person in place. So, that was my comment.
Thank you. Are there items of interest for consideration for future board meetings? Pam?
Do you want to go first?
I don't know. It might be the same thing. I would like us to have a report on our student health clinic and our wellness clinic, just to see how it's started off for the year and see where we are financially. So, just a report on all of that.
Pam?
Okay. And I would like, the student health, yes, I'm interested in that whole clinic presentation, but also, maybe a separate presentation, because it would be, I think, too much to have in one night. But, a presentation like I discussed earlier on mental health, provided to our students, how it's provided and by who, and I think it's a very important thing that we focus on, because it's something the kids really need, and affects, it affects their behavior and their academic performance and so forth. I would like to, hearing what Ms. Johnson said tonight, I would like to have the discussion about iPad insurance. I haven't had just one parent come in with that, but several, and I think it would be a good topic for us to discuss. And her son certainly had a very good point. Could we talk about middle school sports? I've had several people come to me asking about middle school sports and why we don't offer more for those kids at a younger age. And I was surprised that our public input lasted only two minutes. Did we change that? And if so, could we consider going back to at least three? Because it's very stressful when you get up there to talk, and I don't want to discourage that, and I'm so happy when someone does get up to talk to us. So, I think it gets, you know, they get very nervous, which is two minutes. It's not sufficient time. And last, okay, last, I want to say, it's not a topic for future discussion, but I just want to say it right here and now, that we have a great administrative team, and I want to thank each of you who have been responding to parents and to board members, to parents with topics ranging from recess to food choices to bullying. All school districts have problems, but not all school districts welcome parents to come and talk with them, meet with them, and not all administrators take time out of their day or out of their night to talk to parents, talk to board members, to talk to community members. And I think you're just doing a really good job of making people feel like they belong to this district, and I just want to thank each of our administrators for that. Thank you very much.
I'd like to address the two-minute. It wasn't changed. Part of the problem is that the sheet that normally sits here is missing, and we couldn't remember two or three minutes.
Thank you. Being someone who has spoken quite frequently, I could have told you. But, thank you, Lisa, for clarifying that.
Dennis?
So, Board Member Charles, while I respect you wanting to discuss the iPad insurance and the middle school sports programming, but I think we should let the administration take a crack at it. The iPad situation that Ms. Johnson brought up, Mr. Bonds and his capable team should be able to look at it. They'll bring a recommendation to the board, and we'll look at it from a policy perspective. You okay with that, Mr. Bonds?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, the other thing as it relates to the middle school sports, I had a conversation with, I had the opportunity to have a conversation with Mr. Fergar last week, our interim athletic director, and I do believe that this would be appropriate discussion for the new athletic director and the athletic team, to send that up to Dr. Johnson's administrative team, and then, could you all send us a recommendation? So, I think it would be too premature for us to have that discussion at the board level.
Thank you, Dennis. And that's what I mean, of course, when we have a discussion, is for you to bring it to us, and bring us your thoughts and, you know, your ideas on it, so we can discuss it. Thank you.
Are there other items for future board meetings? Okay. So, during the meeting, or at the beginning of the meeting, I announced the future board meeting days, and I'd like to do that again, because there is a change from what we normally do. Committee meetings in October will be on Monday, not Tuesday, Monday, October 10th, beginning at 4:30, except for the Finance, Transportation, and Committee Meeting, which will be at 3:00 on Tuesday, October 11th. The Business Meeting will be on Tuesday, October 25th. Questions? Comments?
Yes. I'm drawing a blank here. Dr. Anderson Levy, at some point, I would like the administration to come up with some type of acknowledgement or reception for former President Shannon Sharmar. I think that that's warranted.
If there is nothing else, we are adjourned.